Too much.
Yeah.
No, yeah.
I'm right.
Two months late signing this whole process. It's very fast.
I'm definitely my father. He can't.
So the girls won, right? Yeah, the girls. I, yeah. The boys got four. So we had two guys who got second. And they really wanted to go out before he really did a lot of that. I was really proud of them. So, so. Well, if he doesn't, I hope we can try and say that for a city. Well. The world's got a really good, a great time, a good standard. Yeah. You have a lot, not so much. So he's got.
All right. I am going to call the village board meeting to order for May 13th, 2021. Roll call.
Trustee Brochus.
Here.
Trustee Thuzius. Trustee Brunner.
Here.
Trustee Paul Mikowski.
Here.
Trustee Hartman.
Here.
Trusty Kettlebator.
Here.
President Leifeld.
Here. Can we please stand for a part of the legion? Part of the legion is super right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, our individual, with liberty and justice for all. Right, for a public comment, this is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board at any age, please observe the timeline of three minutes. For the board encourages input from residents that may not discuss or have any issue that is not newly noticed on the agenda. Do you have anybody that would like?
Uh, we did not have any registrations, but we do have a written comment submitted from Seth Johnson, five zero zero two, Lawsonburg, over. He states, I very support both in favor of approving the contract with the Middleton Cross Plains area school district to continue to provide an SRO for the 2021, 2022 school year. As has shown in the evaluation, focus group feedback and survey results, students and families in the district overwhelmingly support the SRO program and want to see it continue. Thank you.
Anybody on cyberspace?
Uh, we do not have any hand raised on Zoom here.
All right, very good. We'll go to the consent agenda upon request of any trustee, any item made due to consent agenda, except for consideration under general business. Everybody want to move with the guy?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All right, a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Move, all right. For the village officers, I have nothing to report at this time. Judy?
Um, just a few things. Um, as you see at your thing, there's a welcome to Cross Plains Village. Um, thanks to Bill and his staff in the chamber. What they're doing is they're doing welcome packages at the beginning of the month. Um, and they're actually doing the Crest Plains, Blackford, and Nazo. But these, these little handouts are awesome. I actually emailed them to a lot of my friends that live here locally because it's a lot of great information what we have. And a couple of people said, I didn't even know we had three different insurance people in town. So I think they're awesome. Um, so thanks to them for doing that. And then also just to let me know that there is going to be a parade on Memorial Day, hopefully, at 11 o'clock. And Doc Esther is the one that's in charge if you want to be in it. And then also it's police week and we just want to thank our Crest Plains police.
Thank you very much. All right, any other trustee who'd like to report? Andy and then Michael?
Yep, I just had a quick update. I happen to be at the Middleton Cross Plains area school board meeting, which I think most of our audience actually was there as well. I was presenting for another purpose, but while I was there, I thought it'd be a good opportunity to just advocate for Cross Plains. And so I, I sort of brought up the cross-country sectionals meet. And I'd like to celebrate the fact that our girls team was first in state. Lauren Pansegrau finished first in state with a new state record and then went to Southern Illinois and set a state record for the two miles in Illinois that evening of the same day. Yeah, she's incredible. And our boys finished fourth place team and we had two, two gentlemen finish second and third individually. And just to relate to the school board, how great it was to have the community come together using Fair Park and Glacier Creek Middle School. And I'd also like to thank Montagues Public Bureau for raising hundreds of dollars for our team with a fundraiser event that day. Uh, so it was really good to see events here across Plains. And I, I wanted to encourage the board to consider how we can make that happen more in future.
Very good, thank you. Michael?
Uh, I would just like to say that the Light Foundation is, uh, doing their community gardens down in Xander Park. Um, I am the contact person for that. So if anyone is interested in getting a plot down at the gardens, please send me an email. Uh, my email address is located on the village website. This is Michael Ponikowski.
All right, thank you. Oh, God.
Uh, just a note to put in your calendars, Tuesday, June 8th, the public safety committee is going to have a public hearing about body one cameras. It will be at the Legion Hall at seven P M. And there'll be more information to get off the market that.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll go to village administrator, Bill.
Okay, yeah, first I just want to respond to Julie's comment in regards to the beautiful packets that were created. I cannot take any credit for it. It was Bobby and Becky and Renee. So I want to recognize that. Also want to recognize Mike Exxon. I believe he took home the best recreation director here in Wisconsin, Wisconsin Parks and right social function. Yeah, that's me.
All right, are there any other department head reporting tonight?
I don't have any on my list, but we do have them here with us.
Yeah. Okay. All right, we will go to general business. Uh, first thing is the presentation from the Littleton Cross Plains area school district, uh, school resource officer program.
I want to check the audience here. Uh, Chief Reska, can you see the presentation?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Sounds good. I think Superintendent Dina Monal will take it off here.
Yeah, good evening. Um, my name is Dana Manog, and I'm the superintendent of the Littleton Cross Plains area school system, and I am really pleased to be with you here tonight. I'm joined by my colleague, Andy Sersmorestead, who is our director of bilingual programming in our system. And we're also supported by several school board members. So, um, we're here tonight to provide you with an overview of our school resource officer model evaluation process, our findings and our recommendations. Our school board approved our recommendations and the contract between the district and the village of Cross Plains on a nine oh vote. And we are pleased to move this process forward with all of you here tonight. It's a big responsibility. Um, our evaluation process was truly a collaborative effort. It needs to be stated that the three agencies impacted by this evaluation and the associated recommendations, our school district, the city of Middleton, and the village of Cross Plains, all stand united in these commitments. And those are to work collaboratively to support students of all identities, to be successful, thriving members of our community, to confront issues of hate and racism directly and firmly in the work we do with and for students and their families, and to hold each other accountable to equitable outcomes for our students. And I have to say, Chief Reska has been a wonderful partner, um, in this entire process from start to finish. Um, we, we have communicated throughout with him and look forward to, to ongoing collaborations with him. He's, he's been fantastic to work with. A quick recap of our evaluation process. Our charge was to evaluate the SRO model and to lift voices of color through our process. The evaluation took several months to complete and included several inputs and involved feedback from more than 2,500 stakeholders. While the pandemic made our outreach efforts more complex, those efforts were significant and involved many staff. And we always want to recognize the many people who had a hand, um, in this evaluation process. Generally speaking, research tells us that the evidence on the effectiveness of SRO programs is limited in scope and in quality. There is mixed evidence on the effectiveness of SROs to make schools safer. Some literature offered recommendations for SRO programs, and you will see highlights on the table in this slide as well as the next. You will also see these recommendations reflected in those of our school districts later on in the presentation. In summary, they emphasize training specifically related to juvenile behavior, child development, communication, disability awareness, stereotypes, and school policy. A clear memorandum of understanding between agencies with clearly articulated roles and responsibilities of the SRO and cross sector collaboration. Having an evaluation process in place for the SRO program that is inclusive of data and the recruitment and hiring of effective SROs. And that's the first table. Continue that. All right, so as part of the evaluation process, we surveyed students in grade six through twelve, district parents and guardians, and district staff regarding their perceptions and feelings about SROs in our schools. This survey yielded a tremendous amount of data which informed our recommendation. It will also inform next steps. Much more data is included in the materials you were sent in advance, so tonight I'm only sharing a few highlights. Of course, this slide contains quite a bit of data. It's really hard to read on screen, so we'll not be going through it piece by piece. However, we wanted to include it in order to give an example of the representation of racial demographics you're able to reach in our student body through the survey. The columns that are white show the total percentage of students who identify as a particular race or ethnicity in our secondary schools according to our student database. The columns that are shaded in gray show the percentage of survey respondents who self-identify as a particular race ethnicity in the survey. You can see that some racial ethnic groups were overrepresented in some schools on the survey. Some were underrepresented and others were close with respect to representation. We asked all survey groups the question, what do you believe would be the best option for the well-being of MCPASD students to ensure all students, regardless of identity, are treated fairly and equitably by police and schools? Respondents were able to choose from more nuanced responses. For the purposes of this slide and the next two slides, we combined responses into maintain, eliminate, or no opinion or other. This slide shows how parents and guardians responded, disaggregated by race. Numbers in parentheses are the actual numbers of respondents in each demographic group. So if you need a moment to look at the data. And this is the same question, but with students in grade six through twelve as we started. And this is the same question again, but with staff. The final piece of our evaluation involved collecting data from focus groups. The purpose of the focus groups was to dig more deeply into the perspectives of families and staff from different demographic groups and of differing opinion. To better understand the perspective of our Black and Latinx students and to probe the thinking of our administrators once they have the opportunity to digest the literature and data in order to inform recommendation. So the following is a high level summary of themes. Again, more detail is in the information you've received. Relationships are extremely important. Ongoing training is necessary. There was concern about the impact of policing in schools on students of color. Students felt officers should start purposely interacting with students in our schools at the elementary level. Concerns regarding racial disparities in the data and that this information needs to continue to inform our actions moving forward. And there was strong support for restorative practices in all setting. Through our process, we did receive questions regarding the training SROs receive before and during their time on the job. And Chief Reska was able to give us a lot of really great information about this. Chief, can you just share a little bit more detail on the subject?
Sure, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
So this is the training that Officer Roger Cyver is involved in. Um, lots of this training, um, has taken place since he, uh, took the position over in 2018. Uh, with COVID being in the middle of all of this, uh, some of it has stalled. However, it looks like it is picking back up. Um, as you can see, it's, it, it stems an array of different types of training. Um, this is just a snapshot of, of the training that he does because he's also involved as our, um, firearms instructor and, and so he does other, other types of training. But as you all know, we, we are a smaller department, so we have to isolate, um, individual officers to have certain, uh, levels of training. Uh, we don't have the, the budget to, oh, uh, to train multiple people in multiple areas. So, um, these are just focused on him with regards to, uh, the SRO. And, uh, as you can see, it's a, a pretty extensive list. So, uh, his training began 2018 and, and has continued, um, through 2021.
Thanks, chief. To summarize what we are recommending at the middle school level, we are recommending the role of the SRO evolved to a community SRO. These officers will serve as the first point of contact and liaison to our, to our elementary schools and our middle schools. With respect to next steps, a small team will develop the job description and will be consistently throughout the spring, summer, and through next school year as we implement. And Chief Reska will be part of that small team. We will also provide feedback and input into the evaluation process for our school resource officers. We also wanted to share with you what we are recommending or what we have recommended with respect to our high school. Um, and so the SRO of the high school will remain on campus with some changes to include coming to work in plain clothes, being involved in specific training connected to themes that emerge from our evaluation process, and gaining feedback and insights from student leaders on a consistent basis. We also want to make sure that not only the SRO, but any officer who interacts in our high schools is clear on roles, responsibilities, expectations, and that we have a shared understanding of student outcomes. We'll be clearly articulating and communicating roles and responsibilities for different employees at the high school campus who support student behavior. We wish to collaboratively develop the onboarding process for any new SRO and to also provide input on the evaluation of these officers. Lastly, we want to make sure we are talking about the issue of double consequences, and that is when a student receives in-school consequences and police-related consequences. And sometimes that is appropriate and sometimes that deserves further discussion. We have several recommendations related to the training of SROs. And again, we're so thankful and pleased and impressed by what has already been put into place with our school resource officers. Uh, we have a new code of conduct and our continued work in the area of restorative practices will also be important as we move forward together. Through the evaluation process, there were questions and concerns raised from community members regarding the need to bolster resources and services in the area of student mental health and well-being. Therefore, we intend to conduct a system, system-wide social and emotional mental health needs assessment and resource mapping process. In addition, we will be focusing on strengthening the coordination and monitoring of school-based mental health services. We're actually going to be bringing forward a formal report to our school board on June 14th with respect to these two pieces. All of these recommendations will be shepherded by a small group of stakeholders over the next several months. This group will be facilitated by the Director of Student Services, and will include staff, administrators, students, community members, and representatives from our cooperating police departments. In closing, we believe the continued partnership we have with the Village of Cross Plains Police Department and our school resource officer model is one very important way we can work to ensure a safe and secure learning environment for our students and our staff. And with that, we would welcome any questions or comments.
Does anybody have a question or comment on this? Okay, I have Andy and then Judy.
Thank you so much for coming out to Cross Plains, everybody. Good to see you. Um, one of the things I'm curious about, I, I've seen the data quite a bit and I'm just curious. Typically, we, we know what percentage of each population we've been surveying. So do we have access to that information? So for example, what percentage of staff actually responded? What percentage of parents? What percentage of students from each location?
You know, we do have that information and I can get that for you, Andy. I, I believe it's included in the lengthy report that you have access to.
Yeah.
Um, and I have a copy of that with me so I can, after I, we're done, I can thumb through that and let you know what page number that is on. Um, but there was a, we did probably the percent of families and staff and students.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, yeah, Julie, Bill.
I'm just wondering, I know what Ellen said, they want to take away the uniform under in school. How will the children know or how will the kids know that the T Z officer is decent and thankful?
We've actually had conversations with Chief Reska about that here in Cross Plains. So it's going to be a little bit different. The officer at, at Glacier and that, that's going to be serving the schools in this area will remain in a uniform. Um, because of the size of the department, that officer often has to provide backup. Um, and so we had good conversations with Chief Reska. Um, at the high school, for example, um, you can tell the officer is still the officer. So they have a polo shirt with a badge-like logo, um, that's on their chest here, um, and then a badge that's, that's pretty prominent on their belt. Um, so, um, maybe not, the, the different look, but you can still, it's very distinguishable.
Because you want, just in case, maybe the perfect answer to thank you.
Yeah.
Bill?
So can you, can you explain? You said in one of the slides that you're going to a community RSO. What does that actually mean? Yeah, because it wasn't, I didn't see that it was really explained well in this.
Right, right. So, um, conceptually, um, the school resource officer, uh, will no longer only office out of Glacier Creek, um, but will actually have purposeful interaction at, at Park and the other elementary schools that feed Glacier Creek. Um, they'll still be the first point of contact, um, but that, there's a small team that's going to actually be working over the next couple of months to develop sort of a schedule for that person so that there is meaningful interaction, um, in all of those places. So right now, um, you know, Roger greets kids in the morning at Park. Um, he is present in the halls at Glacier Creek, but he doesn't right now purposely come into classes and, and provide education or be part of, um, very specific interactions with students. And so all of the administrators involved believe there was a missed opportunity that we need to capitalize on. And so that is what we mean by that is that the, the officer is not just going to be at Glacier Creek. In addition, there might be some community events, uh, where kids are going to be, where it would be really helpful if the officer was present. Um, we have several of our administrators who've actually experienced this kind of a, a model in other settings and found it to be incredibly helpful in building relationships with kids and families. And so the details will be worked out in the next couple of months.
And then, and then, um, does that include like St. Francis and other, uh, private schools also or?
Um, you know, we don't have jurisdiction, um, over our private and parochial partners, although I'm sure as a community person, he interacts with, with students there too. We just don't have, um, the ability to kind of dictate what, what that would look like or feel like in those settings.
And then how many schools feed Glacier?
So, uh, that would be Sunset Ridge, West Middleton, Park, and part of Pope Farm.
Okay.
Pope Farm is split into, into two.
Okay. Andy? Yeah, so you would have the single officer here in Cross Plains splitting their time between three elementary schools and the middle school.
Correct, right.
And then versus in Middleton, they'd be splitting their time between the high school and the middle school.
The high school officer will remain and that high school officer will continue to support Clark Street and the high school. And then the officer at primary would be working in the elementary schools also that feed primary. So that would be all the Middleton-specific elementary schools.
Then I do have another question.
Well, I have a comment, but go ahead, I'll go last.
Okay. Um, I, I couldn't help but notice the staff of color recommendations and some of the anecdotal stuff that they're recommending, which is forty-five percent of them saying,
Yeah.
eliminated altogether. Uh, do you have any anecdotal data to support why they felt that way?
Well, there are only six, um, in that category, which isn't, you know, another topic of conversation. Um, I actually had a follow-up conversation with staff of color. We'll continue to do that to kind of further unpack their thoughts and feelings about, um, our school resource officer model and how that can be improved. Um, this past week, I was a part of an interaction with staff of color and the school resource officer to continue to have discussions about why they felt the way that they felt and what else can be done to improve the situation at the high school. And we, we only had six folks respond, um, and so we need to, to figure that out too and use some more outreach. Yeah.
All right, Bill, I'm sorry. So can I ask one question for Chief? Tony? Hey, Chief?
Yes.
So this is Bill. One of the, one of the, um, reasons we actually started the SRO program here in the village a couple of years ago was because we were seeing, not we, but the, uh, police department was seeing an increase in, um, uh, gang population within, within the school district, um, itself and within the village. Is that, is that still an issue or where, what's your thoughts on that? Or is, is that going away or?
Um, Bill, I, I guess that's news to me. I, I did not, uh, we don't have any data to support that any, that there's a, you know, quote unquote, gang issue. Um, if, if, if we're just simply defining gang, um, it would, it would be three people doing something together, um, some kind of, uh, illegal activity. We, the statistics since I've taken over, there's nothing to support that there's any kind of gang activity in the middle school.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
You know, maybe I can add some, some context to that. Um, so, um, in learning about for the genesis of the school resource officer at Glacier Creek, um, I think there, there were behavior concerns in the school. And an answer, um, or a remedy to that, um, was to bring an officer on board. Uh, we all know that the school, the school resource officer, um, is, is one way to support student behavior in a school, but there are many, many other ways as well. And the, the current administrative team at Glacier Creek, Ken Metz, who's the principal, Mary Summers Kern, who's the assistant principal, and others have really done a lot within the school walls themselves to support kids in all different kinds of ways so that behavior issues and problems have really become much less significant. Um, and we have our own internal data to kind of justify or support that claim. Um, in addition, in the report, I think you'll see, since the, the school resource officer has been at Glacier, I think there was only one student who received any kind of citation um, in three years' time. So that's a pretty compelling data to let you know that, um, that there aren't behavior situations at Glacier that would rise to the level of involving an officer.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Andy? Um, a- as we're all evolving, as our communities are growing and becoming more diverse, Middleton includes, as Cross Plains, obviously, we're here to discuss. So, thanks, Bill. Um, I'm, I'm wondering if you could talk about the literature review because we're, we're not stagnant and, and some of the issues that other, you know, municipalities are facing are definitely included in this literature review. So how did that impact the findings of your study and the results that you recommended?
Sure, thank, you can chime in. Um, I'll start. Um, but the, the team took a look at, uh, the holistic recommendations from the literature to review. Many of them are directly connected to the recommendations. Many of them are cautionary for us as we continue to implement. You know, we looked at our own data, not just here in Cross Plains, but also in Middleton when it came to citations, referrals, et cetera. Those are all broken down demographically, um, just to, you know, help us understand if we are being disproportionate, um, in our police involvement in our schools. Uh, we also look at, um, you know, just behavior data in all of our schools too. So suspensions, expulsions, those kinds of things, please don't have anything to do with that. We own all of those, you know, those things. And so we'll continue to use the, the findings from the, the literature virtue, literature review to inform not only this, um, model evolution, but also everything that we're doing day-to-day in our schools with and for students.
And then follow, Jeff?
Yeah.
I, I'm under the impression that there's a committee being formed to help redesign the, the role of the SRO.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can you tell us anything about who's on that team and? Can you tell us anything about who's on that team and/or how that works its way into the contracts that we may have for us?
Sure. So it's going to be a multiple stakeholder group committee that will include certainly administrators, social workers, two leaders in our system who have really been responsible for implementation of resorted practices. So Antonio Hoy would be someone who's going to be on the committee. We have parents who have already stepped forward to say that they'd like to be a part of it. We had a school community partnership committee. In fact, a Cross Plains resident has already come, come forward to say that she would really like to be part of that. We'll have teachers, we'll have reps from this police department and also from Middleton. And we'll see how that evolves. We are happy to come back before this body and give updates regarding the job description and also just the model, you know, sort of as it evolves and how, you know, as it's implemented, so that you can all really know and understand how things are going too.
I think that group, I would also add students.
Yes, students as well.
Thank you.
All right, I guess, I'll, I got a few comments. One, I want to give kudos for actually doing, handling this the way I think it should have been done. A lot of places made it political. And then you guys decided to base your decision on data, which I think is always sound in the way to go. And quite frankly, the model and the process that you used, I think that could be a national model on how to evaluate SRO program. So I think you guys did an excellent job on that. I think the data speaks for itself, you know? I think it gives you a good point, jump off points of what to improve. You should always try to continue to improve our program. The only negative comment I get, I thought the literature review used some pretty old studies.
Okay.
I, you know, the way society is moving, I'm not sure if something published in 2006 is really applicable to 2021. And I felt the writer might have, I took the, the view that it seemed a little biased towards law enforcement versus a more general look at it. But again, that was just my, my feeling reading it. Because certainly, I think the local data didn't necessarily support some of the comments that were made within that literature review. So, you know, I'm putting that aside. To me, what's important is what the parents want, what the children want, and what the district wants from us. So to me, you know, it was extremely helpful. There was, there's no doubt in my mind where we should go with the SRO program. So I want to thank you guys for doing that, because I think you always get better decisions when you have that. And you did a nice job on collecting that.
Thank you.
Any other comments for people, Andy?
Yeah, I also would like to say that I really appreciate the work that Middleton, Cross Plains, or the school district has done in doing the research and putting the resources behind the study to get data to support this. And I really think the best part about this is that we can redesign an SRO in the image that fits us, fits Cross Plains, fits Middleton, fits the high school. And it's exciting to have a team of students and community members and law enforcement coming together to do that. So I look forward to seeing what the redesign of the SRO looks like, and thanks so much for coming.
Thank you, welcome.
Anybody else? Doug, just a quick comment, more, you know, application of experience. You know, I have a non-verbal daughter who went through the school district. And at Glacier, Jeff Davis was the contact at that time. He was a source of strength for her, and she really loved the gentleman at high school, SROs. And it helped me feel that I was safer, being a little more vulnerable. So I definitely think it's the right path to take to continue the community focus and to continue to have the job evolve more and more. So thank you for that experience.
All righty, well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
We will move on to the next item of discussion and possible action regarding the school resource officer program agreement by and between the village of Cross Plains and the Middleton Cross Plains Area School District for the 2021, 2021, 2022 school year. All right, do I have a motion? All right, do I have a second?
Yes.
So I have a motion in a second to approve the agreement between the village of Cross Plains and the Middleton School, Middleton Cross Plains Area School District. We're at discussion. And anybody?
Oh, yeah, I, I do have a question. I, I was wondering, we, we got a communication from Bill earlier this week. I was wondering if you could just expand upon the communication as to like, why all the different versions of the contract? Or the, you know, what's going on? Can we just get like a straight up, like, what's going on?
Yeah, sure. So my understanding is though that Chief Fresca received an email, early email from Superintendent, you know? That got lost in the email. I guess it wound up in a junk mailbox. And so we actually did not see a redline copy of the changes of from the 2020 to 2021 contract to the current proposal until after the school were approved it, I believe, on April 26th. Since that time, we've been going back and forth trying to nail down the specific language, having to deal with the program costs. And that the previous agreements had some errors in it. One, referring to the village of Cross Plains, I think the city of Milton had it crossed out at that time. And so there was some confusion in regards to the previous language that had stated village of Cross Plains or actual cost. And so that caused some confusion, yes, because we had interpreted that to potentially mean time and material with the change in job duties and responsibilities. I believe that was cleared up, and I believe the school board actually approved the most recent copy, which is the current copy, a packet this past Wednesday. And so as you can see in that agreement, they do reinsert a payment referring to the city of Milton. And they removed the actual cost language. And so the effort here was to try to, to have the language represent what was the original intent of, of the program. And so others were here, when the program was created, my understanding was, is that that the school district would pay the program cost at half of Milton SRO wages or the village actual cost, whichever is more. So that's what we were trying to figure out, try to put, make sure that that's represented in the parent.
And so do we feel confident today that the village is protected adequately by the current contract that's proposed?
For the 2021, 2022 year, I believe we are protected unless something, with the pandemic. And that's again, where school is not in session.
Thanks.
Yeah, I had some concerns with the original contract that was passed, so we clean it out. This is what I would recommend, I'm comfortable with this one here. I think we could still make it a little bit better. And I think next January, since the year of agreement, that we can probably simplify it a little bit more. So it's a little bit clearer, Bill and I have talked about that. So I personally am comfortable, and they've reassured some of my concerns, cleared it up, so. Bill?
So kind of going back to that, which is really the biggest concern I had was there was a lot of confusion on my part from how the contract was put together and then how the pandemic hit and the schools closed and whether or not we got paid. If we didn't get paid for the 2021 school district year, and then how is that? I still don't understand how that, if that happens again for some reason this year, this school year, are we protected as a village or, or, or not?
Well, I guess you're, I don't know what your definition of protection, protection is. The contract, you know, the way the contract we've kind of interpreted is, if school could be open, the officer should be paid for by the school district. Clearly, in this pandemic where we ran into a little bit is when they basically closed down the schools for that time period. Now, we were reimbursed by the federal government for that, so we were protected. But that would be the only question in the agreement, is it guaranteed? The way it's reading is when school is in session. So that means that if there is school or pending school, then we get reimbursed. So, you know, I'm comfortable, but that's where we got into a little bit of discussion with the pandemic, when they actually closed the school totally. And, you know, there's a fairness there. We were certainly using the officer in our scheduling and patrolling and stuff. And I don't know if that would have been fair to charge the school district for that. Even though, you know, we are in a little unique situation where we actually hired the officer for the position. So I, I think we're real comfortable, I think we can do some clarification with the national.
Has Paul looked at this?
Yeah.
Oh, that's what this email is?
So if you look at the previous, which has similar language, the only language that's changed that's redlined it version, which includes the, the job, the officer resource, the school resource officer section, under section one, and then the officer duties under section two, and program costs under section four.
Good. All right, Andy?
I think my, my other question is just basically, whenever this committee meets from the school district to determine what the new SRO job duties would be and what the, whether they're uniforms or not and what the protocols are, that's not going to be in this particular contract. Is that going to make it into the next contract? Or are we, whenever they make their decision in the interim, is it just implied by this contract? Or is that something for Chief Tony just to figure out in the interim?
Well, if I didn't, I don't think you should put a job description in a contract. That should be a separate document. And I would leave that to the chief to work with the group to see if it's workable. And we have to work with the chief on that. I, 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 I think you don't want to muddle up an agreement or a contract with the job description.
Well, you say that, but SRO resource officer duties are in the contract.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, trying to simplify this a little bit more. So I would not be in favor, I'm just letting you know, you know, this is, it's gone through the board twice, and I don't want to keep holding it up on these, what I consider not significant to the agreement. But I do, that was part of the agreement, I think we can clean out, make it a lot simpler.
So maybe I can interject here. So from for this program moving forward, you know, if the changes are fall under the current language, that would indeed have changed to it. If, if Chief Tony or I start feeling that we're moving above and beyond the confines of the agreement, that's when, you know, in our discussions with, with the school district, we would have to comment a bit within the year, within the school year. Now again, this is an annual contract or annual agreement, which would be up for negotiation again this time next year.
Satisfying.
All right. Go ahead, Michael.
Okay, this is dealing with the amount of the fifty percent of the average of the Middleton SRO. Just want some clarification, because we had basically budgeted like $42,000. But this is more speaking to the average of their wages. So are we looking at the same sort of utilization of the Middleton SRs and our SRO as what we had before to get to that dollar amount?
What they do is they take old Middleton officers, add their salaries together, divide by two, and then that's the payment that we will get.
Right, so my question is, with it being defined as a community SRO, are they going to be putting in as many hours in this new contract as they did in the last one? So that our budgeting of $42,000 scripters are going to fall? That's why I'm asking on the utilization, if how much is changing, is what I'm asking.
And that was my, that was my, we've cleared that out there, doing the same number of hours.
Okay.
Full-time position.
That's, that's what I, I didn't say that, but that was what I was wondering, so we can budget correct this, thank you very much.
All right, let's do a roll call, hold please.
I, oh, sorry. Is there any contract that Middleton's under where they base their salary on half a Cross Plains?
No, they probably would like to.
There, there is not, their, their agreement states plainly that, that SRO officer gets paid at halftime of what their office wishes are.
I mean, I just, with all due respect, I don't know why we're basing all of our contract language off of Middleton's criteria. I think we need to have.
Well, I can give you a little history.
Sure.
So Middleton pays their officers more than Cross Plains does. So we have an officer doing the exact same job that Middleton officer is doing. So we felt that it should, we should get paid the same, because it's equal work for equal pay. That's the short answer. Bob, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that also to recognize the fact that Cross Plains has an additional training cost that we wouldn't normally see in Middleton because of the number of officers they have. So there's a little bit of increase in your cost doing this position. And that's kind of reflected by keeping something constant, which would be the, what Jay described, the Middleton pay. It's a little bit more, it will always guarantee, Middleton's paying more than Cross Plains' roster. So it's a little bit of a nod to the fact that you're going to get a little bit more money, plus Jay says you're doing the same job.
All right, roll call, hold please.
Trustee Calvair.
Yes.
Trustee Harvin.
No.
Trustee Pomitowski.
Yes.
Trustee Brenner.
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius.
Yes.
Trustee Brochus.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. Motion to adjourn, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, guys.
All right, item number three, 1400 Bourbon Road and Mill Creek Department. Take these one at a time. Eight, discussion and action regarding the agreement that terminates the reported commercial plan development district deed restriction and covenants in Lot 54, lot of Glacier Valley.
I'm making a motion that we terminate the recorded commercial plan development for Lot, apparently Lot 54, Glacier Valley.
All right, do I have a second? All right, I have a motion in a second. Billy, you want to do a quick summary, so?
Yeah, I can, I can jump in here. So this is having to do with zoning and a planned development, land use issue for Mill Creek Apartments, which is located at 1400 Bourbon Road. The lot that property is on has a previously established planned development and does not match the current use of it. When the project was approved, I believe it was in 2015, but there are both, we, the village went through the proper process of, of approving the land use, current land use, and approving the warrants for it. What we did not do at that time was resend or remove the previous deed restriction. And so recently has come up through a title search of the property owner, they're looking to do some refinancing here, and it tripped and it mattered to them in this process. And so they requested for us to go ahead and remove that. And as you see in your packet, there is an agreement to do so, proposed agreement to do so. And then in addition to that, would be an ordinance to repeal ordinance number six dash ninety, which set up that zoning.
All right, any discussion?
I just want to know if they're paying for this or if we are.
So this is, so we are not. So this is, so uh we are not charging for this. This is a zoning court issue.
Would we, but we would have charged the the developer at the time we would, that we would have rescinded this.
Correct.
In the past.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, but any, any title work, we're not paying for either.
We're not, we're not paying for title work.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same. Go move. B, discussion and possible action regarding an ordinance to repeal ordinance number six dash ninety. And Bill already, do I, do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to uh. Repeal ordinance number six dash nine zero.
I second that motion.
They have a motion in the second discussion. Is he gonna add anything? It's just tied to the vote line.
That's correct.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, all hold same.
Move. All right, discussion and possible action regarding the village's cross plane sanitary survey report and response.
Do you want a presentation on this?
Uh, probably, well, why don't we get a motion on it? Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I move to open discussion on possible action regarding the village's cross plane sanitary survey report and response.
All right, we're in discussion, so go ahead.
Yeah, so we have a a director of facilities, uh Jerry Gray with us on Zoom. I'll let Jerry take it from here, and then we can, we can answer any questions.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So we recently had our uh sanitary survey completed by the DNR. The Cross Plains Water System. It's a little confusing. I don't know why they call it sanitary survey, but whatever. Uh, the survey's done every three years. Uh, the intent is to monitor the villages' compliance with. Uh, both physical and regulatory um. Requirements from, well, EPA, DNR. Over the years, uh, one of the big items has always been our lack of uh. Adequate water capacity. Um, we are in the midst of addressing that, so. Um, with that one underway, um, the survey delved into some other areas of deficiency. That we have primarily cross connection control inspections. And um private well monitoring. I put together a response to address every uh item that required it in the sanitary survey. The long and short of it is um for us to. Become fully compliant uh in the, in the near term. We're gonna have to dedicate some staff time to. Creating paperwork or creating spreadsheets. Monitoring the spreadsheets, sending letters. The one thing that uh I am looking for from the village board at this point in time is. In regard to cross connection inspections. We're required to inspect a percentage of the. Single-family residences as well as the percentage of commercial and industrial properties. Within the village on an annual basis. And I'm proposing that we um get staff certified. Trained to do the residential. Uh, we can do those in conjunction with water meter changeouts. But I'm proposing that we modify the current village ordinance and require. Commercial and industrial establishments to. Hire uh a private firm to get the inspections done. And submit the paperwork to us. Um, we currently do that with backflow preventers. Um, so it would just be uh the addition of that step when those facilities are already. Having their backflow preventers inspected. They would also get a comprehensive inspection done for possible cross connections and. Uh, the additional paperwork, which would be forwarded to the village for filing. Uh, there's two new things that came about. Uh, the village needs to perform a risk and resilience study. We need to have that done here in a couple months. And then following that, we have to update our emergency management plan before the end of the year. This is an EPA requirement that's been trickled down to us. And I intend to get started on the risk and resilience here the next week or two, well, probably right after Memorial Day. Uh, and then we'll be following up later this year with the updated emergency management plan for the water utility. It's not a comprehensive village-wide management plan. So. I guess I'm gonna open it up to questions. I could talk all night and maybe not answer your questions if I don't hear the questions.
Yeah, I'm just going to put a few ground rules, the whole talk about getting people trained and certified. And um some of those other things will have to put on the agenda. They haven't been noticed, so. What we need to stay focused on is the survey and then your response. So the last two items certainly can be discussed, but there are a number of items in between that you were recommending. We'll have to bring those up. At a separate one, so I don't want to go into discussion on that that hasn't been noticed. All right, questions for Jerry on the the survey uh report and uh his response? Hey Judy.
Um, Jerry, we, and I don't know if this is what we have to talk about later, but Jerry, when you said you're gonna have, you would look to, look to hire somebody to help us with this. I didn't see anywhere in here what it said it was gonna cost to hire these people. Was it?
Okay, that's one little thing that we can talk about.
Okay.
Shifting the responsibility to the private, I know, but we haven't talked about. I would think your business is. Michael.
Jerry, I just have a question. What is a cross connection control program? What does that mean?
That means that uh over a course of a number of years. Every residential building, every business, um. Whether it's commercial, industrial, restaurant, um. Uh, dog grooming, everything. Uh, has an inspection of the facility they're building. To make sure that there are no potential cross connections in place or existing that could possibly allow. Uh, contaminant to reverse flow into the water distribution system.
So it's, okay.
You go ahead.
I think I do. It's just making sure that there isn't, there isn't any backwards flow into the water distribution system, basically.
Or anybody put an illegal connection in to drain something into it.
Oh, I got you. Okay, yeah. All right, I was just curious what it was. I didn't understand. I mean, it's what I thought it was, but that's what I was.
And any other comments? All right, I have, uh, we have motion in the second discussion. All in favor, say aye. What, 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 the motion was what? The motion was an open discussion, that's right. Oh, I'm sorry.
It wasn't, it wasn't an approval.
Oh, okay.
So, so Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong here, but but uh you need, the village, we would need the village board to approve the response. DNR on this.
Correct, we do.
I'll make a motion for action to confirm the recommendations regarding the village's cross plane sanitary survey report and response.
Oh, second. All right, first, all right, we have the first motion we didn't. I I didn't hear that part. So we have a motion to open the discussion. I guess we never voted on that. All right. Well, let's just vote. I don't know, it's after the fact, but let's just vote. All in favor, opening up the discussion, say aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Now I have a motion to accept the sanitary server report in response. So I have, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have a second. Any discussion on this? Motion. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All hold same. Thank you. Sorry for that confusion. All right, discussion and possible action regarding park benches.
This, I'll make a motion that we uh follow the recommendation of staff in the parks committee. And continue to use the current uh bark, park bench policy.
I have a second.
I second.
All right, discussion. Uh, somebody want to brief us or just go on this? I'm looking at. All right.
I, well.
Go ahead. If someone wants to say something, go ahead.
Well, I can, I can, I can start it off here just to, to uh prime the, I'm here. Uh, so this was an item that was requested um by trustee Pomitowski to, for our future geniuses. I believe at that time it was then uh referred back to Park and Rec. Uh, since that time, Park and Rec has taken that action to continue on with the current program or uh benches in the park. And so let's come back to the village board, uh whether to uh. Decide on a different policy or to uh concur with the park.
All right, any comment? Okay, so, uh, you, you want to say something? Okay, so I I guess I'm a, a little confused. And this is, I'm just gonna lay general down on this. I believe benches in our parks are basically serve a function, right? And I think the function they serve is different depending on what park. For example, Raspberry Park, they have benches on both sides of Wall Diamond. And along the soccer field. They're simple, straight benches for when the kids aren't playing or off the field, they sit on the bench. They have the bench at Bear Park, a wood one. It's not attached to anything. That bench, it's moved around. It's sometimes by the playground equipment in the shade. Sometimes they move it to the sun. Sometimes they move it over to the tennis court. Sometimes they move it over to the volleyball court. It plays a function of having a place for people to sit. Tennis courts, I don't know if those are little benches or little chairs. Sometimes they're outside the tennis court, sometimes they're in. So I think the function that we want the bench to provide should play the main role. In what we purchase, all right? I don't think all benches serve the same purpose. And I think each style has its pros and cons depending on what we want it to function in. And number two, I would look at price. I think spending money on decorative, neat-looking benches along Main Street, maybe Xander Park. Is worth the extra money. But to put a seventeen hundred dollar bench along a wall diamond in Raspberry Park. Does not make financial sense to me. So I'm trying to figure out why we want a policy that di- dictates one type of bench. For the whole village, when really we should be looking at, in my opinion, two things. What function do we want the bench? And what bench style works the best to provide it? And number two, how much money do we want to spend depending on. The importance of the aesthetic look of it. So that's where I'm coming from on this. So I, I, I'm a little confused on why we would want one bench throughout the city. So Bill?
So I, Jay, I agree with you on that. The other thing that needs to be considered is, is the uh people donating money. Uh, for park benches in memorial of a family member or whatever. So, you know, I think we already have a policy in place for, for, for donation of trees, benches, that type of thing. For our parks and conservancy areas. I don't want to see that touched uh personally. So uh, again, I'm with you. I don't really understand the whole idea behind what we're really voting on here. And, and you know, what's the purpose of this for the village board?
Well, first, I'll start by saying ditto and ditto. Um, wholeheartedly agree that I don't know why we're seeing this. Um, but I do, uh, what what's in front of us, the recommendation is for the memorial bench policy, and it would be changing that. I'm. My motion was clearly to accept what the PRC said, which is to keep the current memorial bench policy that they have in place. Which means that type of mesh uh for that policy. I didn't, I wasn't talking about any other benches around at all. I don't know why we're talking about every bench in every park, but memorial benches. Thank you.
All right, Judy.
I think, thank you, because I was confused also, because that's how I was reading. So I agree with Kevin. That's what I would vote for tonight. Is to keep that policy as is. I don't think we need to discuss all the other benches, and they all don't need to match. Because it should be for what the purpose is up for that, um, chart.
Okay, so Michael and, I, okay, whoever, okay, I'm gonna go Andy, then Michael, then Mike, all right?
Yes, to what Kevin just said. However, if we are going to create an identity and an aesthetic for the village across planes. It has to be comprehensive. It has to be signage. It has to be benches. It has to be a little bit more control on to. What we're allowing to exist in, especially within our own Parks and Rec Department and within our entire city, our village rather. So, like, I get that, but if we. It starts with something small like this, is all I'm saying. And so let's, let's keep this policy in place. But also, let's put our minds to the point that everything starts with those little tiny things of signage.
Michael?
Right, so I brought this up. You're all wondering why. Because I walk into Xander Park, and I walk down one side of the park, and I see one style of bench, and I walk down the other side of the park inside Xander, and I see another style of bench. To me, that looks confusing. I don't understand why. You're saying benches serve different purposes in different places. Of course they do. But to me, these benches are saving, serving the same purchase, purpose, which is for people to sit down on. I was basically trying to make an aesthetic recommendation or bring it to the board. It's based on the aesthetic of how it looks. We have two different styles, much like what Andy is talking about. It's these details that make our village look good. We all talk about Xander. Many people walk through Xander Park all the time. Why wouldn't we want to have a bench, in my opinion, that is more aesthetically pleasing than the benches that are currently there? Much like the street skate style ones or the ones that were installed at, that the American Legion used. Those benches are seventeen hundred dollars, and I think the reason I was in contact with the, uh, with a representative from that company. That's basically the four hundred dollars that's added onto that bench because they have to weld the spot for the circular brass memorial. I asked for a quote on those benches without that, and it came in to thirteen thirty. Pretty much, and going out and using the Wabash Valley site, which is where Mike bought the benches that are in Xander and that are currently supported by the memorial program. Those benches, just if you buy them in, in groups of one or eleven fifty-four. The benches that look like the benches in the Legion that are. Aluminum sided, not the large circular up and a regular back, those are thirteen ten. So pretty much benches are running eleven fifty to about thirteen fifty. The idea was if we wanted to try to upgrade the benches to a more aesthetically pleasing style. And inside the packet, I provided many options or opportunities for us to do that. Should the benches in Xander become damaged, we don't have to replace them with the same style. And you can, you can go out and find benches that are similar to the street scape style, but aren't exactly. And we don't have to buy, pay seventeen hundred dollars from the company and uh want to keep. You, you, you can get them at different prices. With regard to people donating them. Even if they donated that bench and it becomes damaged or we wish to move it, the only thing that says that they donated it is this little piece of plastic that's screwed. Basically into the plastic loma piece. That can just be removed, the bench replaced, and that piece screwed back in in that exact same location. Just presenting options. So with the pricing and, and, and that, and one other, uh, the benches for the street scape, basically. A lot of these benches, the bench size, not, that aren't the big over two ones, the bench sizes are basically cast aluminum. And then it just depends on what you. And then it just depends on what you want for what you sit on. The ones that are used by Parks and Rec are a plastic-looking lumber, and that was also used in the American Legion. One of the things I did notice in Legion Park is that one of those plastic lumber pieces of where it's attached has actually been disattached, the screw has been through, through it. Whereas the benches from Wanta Key, the bench part is all steel and it's coated with a, basically a resin. So it's just a, it's a steel bench, which is why you can't screw a plaque into it essentially. But there are other options to that, you can get a mounting piece where you mount through the slats and you, you know, there's just a lot of different options. So I wanted to get the temperature of whether or not we wanted to try to possibly, if at some point, change the bench of the memorial program to something that would be more aesthetically pleasing or people are comfortable with the style of bench that's being done or not. And other options or repurposing them. I mean, these benches, I believe, are going to eventually filter out into neighborhood parks. Would you want this bench down in your local neighborhood park? Or would you want one that has a more bench-looking aesthetic to it?
Yeah, I'm, Michael and Andy, I mean, Mike and Andy.
I don't, I don't have a whole lot to say on this matter. Mainly, I had a lot of rebuttals to this if we needed to, but I don't feel like we do with everyone's opinion of where we're going. But the reason that this bench, I had reasons of why we chose this bench, and it wasn't me just choosing this bench, it was actually part of the committee recommendation a number of years ago, where we wanted to put this program together for our parks. And Xander Park happened to be the one that most people wanted to donate in with the new trail that was going through. It was also an area that needed more benches, as we, at the time, there was, there were benches that, so if you go down through Xander, there are actually three different types of benches, not two. There'll be two benches that were donated by Troughton Limited and Becca back before I was here, and those benches are still in place. They don't serve the same purpose, just like you're talking about, but they are part of the donation program prior to the since then, the benches did change to what they are today. Me personally have never heard one negative comment from anybody that has donated them. It's their money, you'd think, you know, they, they would have issues with them. And I haven't heard anything from anybody in our community about not liking the aesthetic or how they look throughout our community, so. Our plan was, the big thing with staff is that there, we haven't had any maintenance issues with them, even during the flood. We had one that popped up, we were able to take the concrete off of it, put a new concrete and put that bench right back down. That's a big thing for us, we're a small staff in a community with a lot of parks and a lot of benches currently. So that's one thing not to have to worry about, not having to paint them all the time or, or not having to, to do maintenance. So, we do have two benches that we were planning to put, that are the same style bench that we're putting, we're planning to put in Glacial Valley Park, the new, where the new playground is, along the new path that we're going through, through there off of Bourbon Road. But they're, they're obviously coming up to the Parks Committee, so if there's any objections to that, you know, that'd be a good time to, to bring that up, but.
Okay, can you just help me clarify?
Yeah.
So we know what we're voting on. So, did your committee, their recommendation is to keep things as is, or was it to?
Yeah, keep, to keep the memorial program as it is.
Okay, so.
And, and their recommendation.
Right behind this motion.
And, and their recommendation is actually to continue to use this bench in other parks as needed, on a needed basis.
Now, did I have Andy, Judy?
Okay, sorry, so if I'm gonna donate money for a bench in memorial, do I get any choice of what the bench is?
No.
Okay, and that's the current policy?
Correct.
Okay.
And the picture is in the memorial pamphlet, so they get to see the actual bench before. And it's a bronze plaque that's actually attached to the composite.
Okay, and then I guess the second thing is just a comment, I think having some standard aesthetic is, is great for the village. If anything has to be outside the box, these benches of people dedicating for their family members should be wild and crazy and awesome and unique to the people who lived a life and then died. And that might give some character to the walk. I'm just gonna throw that out there, that's all I gotta say.
Judy?
The ones that you said you have now two of yet, so two benches, can those be memorial ones? Those are.
They are, so yeah, and the nice part about that, what's that, I'm sorry?
Are they already spoken for?
They're not. The nice thing about these benches is we can't put them in, and if someone would like to say, you know, he'd like to donate that bench, what we've done, we've done that to two benches down there already. Because when you buy in bulk for the number of benches you get, you get a lot better price, like Michael had said. The last batch we got of those benches, we did get six of them, and it was nine, I believe it was nine nineteen apiece, which is quite a bit less than the budget numbers that we had, so. Another reason. But we have put them in the parks and then people have donated after the fact, which would then allow us to purchase another one of those benches.
Thank you very much. All right, any other discussion? Let's do a roll call.
Hold on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just as I read through the, the packet and stuff, I just wanted to make a note that the Parks and Rec Committee that told, you know, honestly.
Yeah, I just wasn't clear what they.
Yep, I'm completely, completely. I'm much clearer.
Thank you. All right, let's do a roll call, both.
Trustee Brenner?
Yes.
Trustee Paul McCoskey?
No.
Trustee Harbin?
Yes.
Trustee Calbater?
Yes.
Trustee Brochus?
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
President Langfeld?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, number eight, future agenda item. Kevin?
Well, I, I think, I think there's some, you, you could discuss unification of signage and benches and all these other things. We've talked about it forever, it's in several of our plans, common plans, streetscape plan. It's one of these things that's everywhere, and therefore it's nowhere. And I think you could spend some time going over that and putting that together, unifying these images. And it starts, I mean, I opened this up, the first thing I saw were two images, totally different logos, one's for the chamber, one's for the village. The park's logo is slightly different. So it happens all over the place, it's different all around town, I think you could look at that, so I guess I'd like to put that on the agenda, start that discussion.
Okay, and you wanted to have a board bar?
No, I think it should start somewhere else.
Okay, tell me, where do you think it should start?
I think it should go through plan at some point.
Or parks?
Parks is one place, but this is outside of parks, this is park, this is downtown.
I understand, it's not ever.
Right, we're just asking where it should start.
Where do you want, or do we get a small group together, a, a hot committee just to work on?
I think it's gotta go through plan at some point, so we plan start.
Can we talk, can we start parks, just because parks have probably the vast majority of sign? Okay, Mike?
So this, on Monday night, there's actually, the Parks Committee has already passed a new guideline for, for parks of, I'm sorry, for signage in our parks and or open space. I've got numbers now to go with that, so it is on our agenda for Monday.
All right.
So just for the park side of it, you'll see a new plan put together that Parks, the Parks Committee has worked on along the staff to bring to the village board.
Okay, well, here, here's, here's what I'm gonna say.
It's going to plan commission.
We're gonna modify that, you guys are gonna work on it in parks. You're gonna send it to plan, because plan can handle the other stuff, and then from plan, we'll move it to the board, is that?
That is the process, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I hope the plan looks down on parks.
Right.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Right, that's what I wanted to say, is that it's not just park signs that we look, and even, and even one of our other previous agenda items dealt something with what is the village logo? Wasn't that a question that sort of falls in the same?
Right, at least.
Exactly.
It was the same thing with the signs of park.
Yeah, we have.
Three times now in like three months.
Right.
Right, so we will start with parks, because they have a lot of signage, we'll do a plan, and we'll move it through that. Everybody agree with that future item? All right, any other? Bill?
Been a while, can we bring in Doug Parks again?
All right, I definitely want to refer that to Parks.
No, we're definitely gonna refer it right to plan. Because remember that discussion last time, Bill, we had a crowded, crowded room.
Um, but I, 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 I do agree, I, I think it's, it's another one of those services that we should seriously look at, so I would ask Parks, police, start that again.
Can, and I'm good with that.
Can I get your ad, Ben?
I, I guess the, the one thing I would ask as a staff member though, is more direction in that, so what, what are parks going to be looking at? Looking at different land options?
Yes, let's start with just land locations.
Locations.
Let's just start with locations.
Current, currently owned property or?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, good one. Yeah, currently owned, but yeah.
Yeah, just start with locations to start, but how's that sound?
Process of elimination.
I'm sorry, Mike.
Yeah. Bill, as far as this last time.
You're currently owned and soon to be developed, or the process.
Yeah.
Because that's, that counts.
Yeah.
That's, that sounds good.
All right, fair enough?
Yep.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we are going to go into closed session, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to go into closed session, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Well, you can call it.
Oh, hold on, I'm sorry, thank you. Hold on, hold on.
Uh, trustee Calbater, yes. Trustee Brochus?
Yes.
Trustee Paul McCoskey?
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
Trustee Brenner?
Yes.
Trustee Harbin?
Yes.
President Langfeld?
Yes. Can you, uh?
Let me have a minute here.
Yeah, yeah. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, can someone open the door and make the show?
Yeah.
All right, I have a motion to adjourn. Let's adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Ooh.
All meetings should be in the shirt.